Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, November 28th, 2023, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. School committees and other public bodies may continue to hold remote meetings through March 31st, 2025, under legislation enacted on March 29th, 2023. The statute, Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, extends quorum reductions for remote meetings. All votes while there is remote participation must be made by roll call vote. This meeting is being recorded and aired live on LCTV. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, into the republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no correspondence for this evening, so we'll move right to approval of minutes. We have a recommended motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes the November 14th, 2023, school committee meeting has presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call vote. Zach?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me as well. All right, we have a moment now for public speak. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak up during the public speak. We'll see. We have just guests here tonight. All right, into the front line. So we're moving right on. School committee announcements and recognitions, anything tonight? All right, seeing none, we head right into business with guests, and we have our student advisory council here tonight. So we will turn it over to you guys, introduce yourselves, and dive right in.
My name is Elaine May. I am a senior at Long Meadow, obviously, and I'm going to talk about the WMASC Fall Conference that we hosted on November 14th. It ran from 8:00 to 12:00. We hosted, I believe it was seven schools?
Twelve.
Twelve schools. A lot more than I thought. We hosted 12 schools, and we had seven different workshops that focused on public speaking, communication skills, teamwork, and leadership building. We had a guest speaker, Tony Pena, who shared his experience with finding, feeding, and living your passion.
Awesome. So I'm Andrew Mederos, and I'm going to talk about our Shake a Tail Feather event, which happened starting the week of Monday, November 13th. So recently, over 25 staff members volunteered to wear a turkey costume for one day if they won the Shake a Tail Feather competition. So throughout the week of Monday, the 13th, students could pay 25 cents to put a tail feather on a picture of a faculty member, sort of on this cardboard board cut out, and 50 cents to take a feather off of the faculty member. So whichever faculty member, at the end of the week, had the most feathers on their picture, would wear a turkey costume on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. It was really awesome, and the winner was Dr. Tomastian, who wore the turkey costume. It was great. I think a lot of the students enjoyed putting some different feathers on their favorite teachers, and then also getting to see Dr. T, where the costume was really awesome.
So on the topic of Dr. T, the music department had its first concert on November 21st, the fall concert. The groups performing were the Concert Band, the Symphony Band, the Lantern's Chorus, and the Super Chorus. So Concert Band is a non-audition band group. Symphony Band is the Concert Band plus the Honors Win Ensemble. Lantern's Chorus is a non-audition vocal group, and Super Chorus is all vocal students in the program. And the concert ran from 7:00 to 8:30. Yeah.
Yep, so last week, on our half-day, we also had the Potter Puff Football Game. We had over 30 players on each team, so more than 60 total this year, which was great. Our theme was Batman versus Joker, and our captains for each team were Finley Moran and Joe Heiser for Batman, and Ben Mulcahy and Liam Welch for Joker. And we had a great win from Team Batman and excellent playing from all teams.
So on our half-day before Thanksgiving as well, we had the Strofer Strength 5K Run and One Mile Walk, which Mr. Pantusco's sport and event management class put on. The winner of the 5K race was Edgar, was former LHS student Edgar Gebhardt. And this event is in honor of members of the Long Meadow community who have tragically passed away. And we also had, and in the cafeteria after the event, we honored all of them with different speeches. There was food and drinks in the cafeteria as well, as well as some live music being played by LHS students in a band. That was great.
So looking ahead, on December 20th, will mark the second music department concert, which is the winter concert, and this time the groups performing will be the Honors Win Ensemble, the Symphony Orchestra, the Lyrics Vocal Group, and E Cantore, as well as the Super Chorus. So Win Ensemble is the auditioned band group. Lyrics is the audition vocal group. E Cantore is also an audition vocal group that rehearses after school. And Symphony Orchestra is the string orchestra, which has both an honors and a non-honors option, as well as the Win Ensemble.
I think that's it for all of us, yeah.
Yeah, that's it for me. All right, thank you. Lots of great events going on. Appreciate you guys taking the time to come down and tell us about some of the goings-on around the high school and the school department. Any feedback, commentary, questions for these folks? All right.
Love the Shake a Tail.
Yeah, that's fun. Great.
And I will admit that, long ago, in a similar competition, I was forced to kiss a pig in front of a student assembly based on a similar fundraiser. So that's a lot of fun. You guys did a great job with that.
Thank you.
Nice work.
And shout out to Ms. Drowick, who does such a great job organizing student activities and giving them many opportunities to develop their leadership skills as part of student government. So thank you, Heidi, for all that.
The snowman will be the next one.
The snowman, all right.
All right.
All right.
Sounds fun. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Appreciate you guys.
Great job.
All right.
Well done.
We are headed next into school improvement plans, and we have lots of guests joining us for this evening. So I'm going to turn that over to you, Dr. Ojek.
All right, and whether they like it or not, we have enough chairs for everybody to join us at the table here. Mr. Mazza might have to slide down one. I know he gets very territorial, and he loves his chair, but we're going to move him. So as the gang assembles here, we have principals representing our six schools and three central office administrators who are along for support and input as well. But I'm obviously very proud of this talented group. They have worked hard with their school councils to assemble school improvement plans. The detailed plans are in your packet, but in the interest of time and to show sort of the coherence, we thought it would be good just to present an overview, a singular overview of all the plans. We hope that you see a lot of commonalities. We hope that you see a lot of alignment across six schools, and we hope you also see alignment with the goals that the school committee developed earlier this school year and with the annual plan that I presented to you as part of my evaluation earlier this school year as well. So I will pull up the slide deck, and I'll kick us off here. All right, so our LPS school improvement plans. So some diagrams that might be familiar to some members of the committee. On the far left, the PDSA planning cycle. Years ago, as an aspiring administrator, I was schooled in the PDSA approach by, shout out to Dr. Tom McGary, former superintendent of Long Meadow Public Schools, who really helped us understand the continuous improvement cycle. And so that was kind of wired into me as a young administrator, and it remains part of how we work here in Long Meadow Public Schools. Again, we hope you see that our arrows are pointed in the same direction and that there's a tremendous amount of synergy, I think, that comes from plans that are aligned. And as, you know, the work of one school turns and progresses, it helps support the work of the other five schools. So we hope that you see those elements in our plan. So a quick side note on our district improvement planning cycle follows sort of the same cycle that the school improvement plans follow, but I just wanted to note for the committee once again that as we will be looking forward to the development of a new district improvement plan to kick off the '24-'25 school year. We anticipate that that will be a three-year district improvement plan, probably beginning in January. We will begin in earnest to sort of put that plan together. We'll begin to gather stakeholder feedback through a variety of means. And our hope would be, our plan is, to come to this committee in August of '24 or September of '24 with a new revised three-year district improvement plan. So just wanted to sort of nestle the school improvement plans in that wider planning circle that is depicted here. And the community can look forward to opportunities to provide feedback to help us shape that new upcoming district improvement plan. And so as we cycle through that, we're now looking at the school improvement planning cycle. Before you today are one-year plans that will bring the school improvement plans, the conclusion of the school improvement plans will coincide with the conclusion of the district improvement plan. Excuse me one second. And so, once we hit the end of the planning cycle, the end of that part of the planning cycle with the district improvement plan and the school improvement plan, then we'll sort of have the district plan and the school plans on that same cycle. And we have to give this some additional thought, but our preliminary thought is that those school improvement plans, that they would follow the three-year improvement planning cycle to mirror the three-year improvement planning cycle of the district plan. But we, you know, that's certainly something we can talk to the committee more about as we move forward. And so tonight is an opportunity for the committee to review the plans, ask our administrators questions, and consider the approval of the plans. Just a side note, school councils are mandated by state law, and these are representative committees that consist of staff, administrators, community members, and, in some cases, students in the older grades. And so we're very true, I think, to the school council legislation that has been in place since, I think it was the early '90s. Looking to some folks who've been around as long as I. And annually, these school councils are responsible for preparing a school improvement plan. We spend, the principals spend sort of September and October working with their school councils to develop the plans that are come to you each year. A quick sort of inventory of some of the work that has been guided by previous school improvement plans, and these are bullets that this committee, I think, is familiar with. And I think these plans have served us well, and they have helped us develop tier-two capacity on the academic side and the social-emotional side. They've helped us develop and embed, to a greater degree, the vision of the graduate. That journey's not done, but that work started with the school improvement plans that we were previously under. Connect blocks, advisory blocks, the curation of a curriculum that is responsive to students' individual identities. That was a big part of our school improvement plans previously. Our administrators have worked closely with their staff on developing very careful articulated school-wide approaches and expectations to behavior. Action civics, the district curriculum accommodation plan, student-led conferences, these are all things that were embedded in prior plans. Our learning walks that this committee has heard about, the development of STEAM opportunities, particularly at the middle school, PD around universal design, our attempts to align our MTSS practices. Again, we have some ways to go on that, but that was part of our improvement plans previously. And then our commitment to expanding DEIB and SEL leadership was a part of our district and school improvement plans as well. So you can see that, you know, I think we take these plans seriously, and I think, you know, as in all walks of life, when you put your goals on paper, I think it sort of forces you to be accountable to those goals. And so I'm really proud of the work that's happened in recent years, you know, where these principals have worked with their staff and their school communities to really stay true and stay committed to those school improvement plans. Questions on prior-year plans before I move on? Okay, you can always come back. So tonight's presentation, again, I hope you see that, you know, the building blocks of these plans fit nicely together, and they are very specifically aligned with our district goals, which are articulated on this slide and that we refer to very frequently. One of the things that I've been thinking a lot about is the coherence of our commitment to social-emotional learning, along with our commitment to, obviously, students' academic growth and the vision of the graduate. And I think we're beginning to see how these gears fit together and how one gear turns another, that when we are committed to that vision of the graduate, we, you know, we know that it is also a commitment to academic growth and the social-emotional well-being of students, and so on. And I think, you know, looking ahead to our next district improvement plan, I foresee that this will be a component of our work, is to, you know, really bring coherence to those aspects of our work in the years ahead. So what you're here for, not to listen to me, but to hear from our principals, are school improvement plans. And so the individual goals of the school improvement plan are lined up with the district goals. So for tonight's presentation, I nestled the school goals under the corresponding district goal. And so I'll have our elementary team kick us off, if they would, on our commitment to ensuring that our MTSS practices are aligned across all schools. And just quickly, MTSS, pardon the jargon, multi-tiered systems of support. It's meant to provide a framework for the tiers of support, the continuum of support that we offer students. So I'll turn it over to our elementary team.
So I'm going to repeat a little bit of what Marty just said, that the MTSS is a system designed to meet the needs of all students, and we want to create inclusive and equitable systems. And to realize this goal, we need to align and optimize data-driven decision-making, which includes progress monitoring and evidence-based supports and strategies so kids can sustain growth behaviorally and socially, emotionally, and academically. So Principal Allen, Principal Materis, and I are committed to working together and with our teams to make sure that these systems are aligned, and we're going to share a couple of examples of that. So Dave.
One way that we further aligned our work as elementary schools is the use of the universal screener for number sense. These screeners, we are using with kindergartners, first graders, and second graders. We had our math interventionist team and math coaches come into the schools, and it's a very short, brief assessment, and screen all kindergartners, first graders, and second graders. And that gave us a real baseline of student performance in terms of their readiness and meeting grid-level standards. So then from there, we're able to, through our work with MTSS, is be able to, you know, provide more support for those students that are needing more support, and then with our better liner instruction for students that are needing further challenges. So, and then we are also using Forefront as our data platform, and that has also been a highly useful tool in terms of providing an easy visual of students' performance, along with our Bridges assessments with MTSS in terms of supporting students and also guiding teacher's instruction.
Great. Thank you. So as Dr. Allen said, Forefront is a platform that we're using to house some of our data. As you can see, we're looking for exploration of a data warehouse. So we have many different things right now. We have the Forefront. At the elementary level, we have Forefront. We have iReady that we also use. We have Power School. So what this data warehouse would be is this would compile all of that information into one platform. That basically would give us a screenshot or a snapshot of students individually. So that data could include academic data, universal screeners, benchmark assessments, grades. It also could include behavioral data, attendance data. So that would give us basically a one-click snapshot of a particular student that we would use during an MTSS meeting. You'd be able to look at it at the student level, be able to look at it at a class level, could be able to look at it at a grade level, school level, and possibly a district level. So it'd be able to streamline things.
So that the, I think that this may be something that the committee will hear about in the months ahead, as we sort of, we have a presentation from one provider, a vendor, early in December, I believe it is, who will, you know, so we're starting to look at the tools, the data warehouse tools that are out there. We obviously want to find something that makes the data accessible and easy to manage for our administrators and our educators. So, and we think that, you know, as we adopt a unified platform, that it would, you know, just sort of, by extension, align our practices across all of our schools. So more to come on that, but I'm appreciative that that's a component of the work that the schools are involved with this year. All right. MTSS also involves the sort of non-academic side of the schoolhouse that's depicted here, and we thought it would be good for our middle educator, middle administrators to talk a little bit about next steps with SEL. And Nilda is here to add anything that might be relevant to the committee as well. So take it away.
So as we know, middle schoolers and middle school in general is a big time for new emotions, social interactions, and the mood roller coaster, but it also is an addition of responsibility academically. And a lot of times, that challenge and that responsibility can be a lot of stress for our students socially and emotionally. So SEL is a really big part. So I'm going to really speak about middle school in particular. And I first want to thank Nilda. She's been wonderful. She's been coming to PAC meetings around the district and sharing what SEL looks like for the parents. SEL supports are really helpful with students' coping skills. It reduces incidents in bullying, increases safety and support, and creates more positive attitudes about themselves and others. And one of the data points that I got from the challenge and success survey that our middle and high schoolers took in 2022 is 71% of students in middle school have a, feel like they have a stress-related health problem, like stomach aches, headaches, lack of sleep. So we want to be able to help our students feel better about their ability to cope with all of the stress that they might be experiencing. So we also look at SEL in terms of not just helping our students, but also helping our educators. Their emotional self-awareness can help them understand their students in front of them when they're dealing with a social or emotional or both situation on the spot, and being able to know how to take the next steps. And one of the other things we are talking about is our middle schools have SEL implementation from people who are going to be trained with Yale Ruler. And I know Nilda will speak more to that, but we have our counselors and our health teachers who are bringing it back to our staff, which is just wonderful. I just want to thank the middle school principals for embracing social-emotional learning so quickly. They're going to be the first team to implement some of the Ruler lessons. We have an SEL implementation team that's district-wide, so it has representatives from every school in our district. They're going to be Ruler-trained. The first training is in December, so we're going to Yale New Haven to learn about the Ruler approach. And those teachers and educators, there are school adjustment counselors on the team, elementary educators, along with middle school educators and wellness teachers, that are going to the training. Ruler believes in the train-the-trainer approach, so after these teachers are trained, they can start training small teams within their respective buildings. Our hope is, after they are trained, that we start looking at potentially the middle-level advisory program, look at some of the classroom instructional tools to help students identify and regulate their emotions, so that the middle school experience is a greater sense of belonging for all students. And it eases the transition from elementary to middle and then the transition to high school. Another thing that we're doing with our educators this year is we're doing five social-emotional learning lessons. So it's our way of devoting time to educators and teaching them some strategies of how they can regulate some of their own emotions. These five lessons are being implemented by the SEL implementation team with faculty. Some of the lessons are going to be focused on how teachers could use positive language with students, reframing their language so that they always speak from an asset and strength-based lens. The November and December lesson was based on gratitude, which we found scientifically increases an adult's sense of joy, and it aligned perfectly with the November and December holiday and the season of giving that most schools were doing.
Nicole Allen is Principal Glenn Burke.
Hello. So I'm going to speak a little bit about the creation and implementation of the Glenn Burke Student Support Center. That hasn't been built yet, but I'm going to tell you what it's going to look like, hopefully. So back in March, I think Nicole came to us with Leston Berry's design and process of the way that they run their Student Support Center, and I just thought that it was the coolest thing ever. And I think we all agree that we could use more support, and we're always like, oh, if we could take five more counselors and have five more spaces, it just feels like the need is there, and what else could we be doing? And we are lucky, we are a Title I school, and so we do have a student support specialist as a staff member in our building who works with kids on SEL and their emotions and all that stuff. But we were trying to be a little bit more creative on kind of utilizing her position and our counselors, and how can we better support kids in a way that we can track, or like, what do they need and all that stuff? So we are in the process of building that right now. So we have a space downstairs that we have allocated to this. We have, hopefully, DBW at the end of this week, and next week we'll be painting the room. And I picked colors out that are supposed to be a little bit better for kids. We got really cool things to cover the lights that are safe. I promise, you know, that are like the forest. So we're trying to create this space that's welcoming and comforting for kids. And the hope is that, you know, who's going to access this space? Obviously, we have students who have already been identified with emotional needs, maybe kids that are experiencing some sort of situational stressors in the moment, kids that need breaks. I mean, we see so many kids that, you know, some of them are avoiding going to class, but so many that just need a break. They need a minute, they need a check-in, they need this. So we're just seeing the number increase, and we're trying to figure out what would be the best way to support these kids. So what we don't want it to be is a place where they're just like, I'm bored, I don't want to be in class, I want to be in here. Or, you know, maybe they don't feel like doing work, or, you know, we're trying not to use it for, you know, we're socializing, because a lot of times we find kids that are all of a sudden, they're all in the guidance suite, and they're all friends, and how did you guys all know that you were going to be here at once? So we're just trying to find a way to better support the kids and seeing if this is something that's going to work. So I think as we start to build this, it'd be awesome if there's a way for us to, whether I go and visit a school or see how they're utilizing it, to better support it, and then start to furnish it. We've already bought some furniture at the end of last year for it, but hoping to get more. And there's been, I've spoken a little bit about this to parents, and we've already had parents say that they would love to donate stuff. So the covers for the lights and some of these, like, really cool little, like, you know, same thing, the same, like, relaxing colors, like carpet, little drop carpets. And we're, you know, we just want to create a space that is going to be utilized but also supervised, because sometimes kids are going to see guidance, and the counselors are both busy, and then they're just like, where am I supposed to go? Like, I'm, you know, I can't figure out what's going on right now, what am I supposed to do? So we're hoping that this space sort of creates that for them, and we're still figuring it out, what that's going to look like, the criteria, the tracking, how long is somebody in there, what did they need it for? So that's all stuff we're going to kind of work out, but we're excited that, you know, hopefully, in the next two weeks, it'll be painted, and then we can start to figure out what the rest of that looks like, and then, you know, maybe reach out to some other places that have these. I think there was somewhere else, one of the other places you said you were looking at, I think in that email, but just to get more ideas, but it just, it'd be a cool thing to see how this works, and, you know, maybe, you know, it could be really good for the kids. So that's what we're hoping for. We definitely, there's definitely a need for some more spaces than just the guidance suite in the main office, because that's not working.
I'm grateful that the middle school sort of continues to think about ways to improve the the facility, even though we're, obviously have a significant building project underway.
Yeah.
It's good to hear that. Part of our MTSS commitment is access and inclusion. And Tom is working with his team on sort of a top-to-bottom review of the program of studies and there's a few other bullets that he'll speak to as well.
Yeah, good evening, everyone. So I just want to say first and foremost, I want to acknowledge all the great work and flexibility that teachers are engaging in in classrooms. You know, more than ever, teachers are showing flexibility, pre-planning, creativity. They're doing a great job. We have such diverse learners in front of us today at such different levels. So awesome stuff. So the three examples I would touch on, kind of to exemplify this at the high school is we had a NASDAQ audit, matter of fact, just a year ago, it came in right around Thanksgiving. So one of the challenges to there was we wanted to make sure that all the language in there, if there's any language that was old, that was outdated, that could be seen as a barrier, we got rid of. The book has been dynamic, right? I mean, we brought, I think in my nine years of being a principal, I think we've brought you 40 formal changes. I think those are 30 new courses and 10 like substantive changes, so much so that we had to bring it to you to get, to get approval. So that's all good, but it's next two courses that might or not have been looked at for 30 years. And so we're going through that right now, department chairpersons and myself, we're reading, reading through all 67 pages of the book. I guess I would say the, the lens that we're using is to say, make sure that it's, there's a coherence to it, there's a overarching language and uniformity to it, inclusive of the VOG, encouraging access to all the opportunities at the high school, providing all the meaningful and helpful information that families and students need when they choose courses. But make sure that our lens is through what the course is going to be like and what the content of the course involves rather than, I think some of the old descriptions might have said that, you know, through the lens of what kind of student would do well in this class. So more, more content, more of just the facts. And then we're adding in more VOG material. The, the audit also encouraged us to be more explicit about our different levels. So we got information in there, we'll present that in a few different ways. And I'll be bringing that to you in January. So a lot of work going on there with, with department chairpersons and myself. Two things that are huge successes at the high school. Let me start with the third one. So expanded access to our student support center. Our student support center is in the beginning of its third year. It has been one of the best things we've done for that student who fell through the cracks. We have a really, we do a full-court press for students who are on formalized plans and they get support. And our students who are very advanced seem to be able to navigate pretty successfully. It's that mid-range student that fell through the cracks, that falls through the cracks in a lot of schools. So it has been a success. It has been a referral base for the last two years. Our MTSS and child study team looks at those and they get, you can refer, a student could refer themselves, but to be honest with you, the type of student who needs that help doesn't refer themselves. Parents can refer them, teachers refer them, counselors can refer them. We use a DNF list to refer them. We advertise it to parents and remind them that it's available. And it's been awesome. We've helped about 100 students over the last two years. As of right now, on November 28th, we're actively helping 58 students. They're in there for multiple blocks, but they're in there with a goal, they're in there with some, some things to work on. A lot of it is executive functioning, a lot of it is organization. And so after the first quarter this year, the tweak that we made is that it is now also available for drop-ins. And so it's anecdotal and it's, hasn't been going very long, but we're seeing that the students who are dropping in are really looking for kind of specific math support. And it's great. It's, we can handle more capacity and it's a really good program. And we want to make sure that we're, we're doing it well, doing it right, but also making it available. Our writing center started this year. I want to give credit to Jonathan Wile, he's an ELA teacher. He studied this for about a year, he presented it to the faculty last spring, we started talking with Marty about it. We had tried very, we tried several ways to try to bring tutoring, student-to-student tutoring to students. And while we've had some success, there were some hangups, there were some stigmas, there were some, there were some things that kind of stopped things from being as successful as we kind of wanted them to be. On November 28th, we've had over 350 individual writing sessions from an army of about 60 students who came in for three days at the, at the end of August and were trained in a very formal way through Mr. Wile. All we had to do was feed them some pizza. They were amazing. It's an awesome program and I, I would encourage you to stop in if you're near our media center or our library. It is, it's got such an energy, Jonathan, it's done a nice job by really getting teachers and the staff to buy in. And a lot of teachers are saying as part of this writing, I want you to go and I want you to get some peer review. And the, the goal is for it not to be just an English department effort. And so with 350 plus, he's probably closer to 400, but he asked me not to brag. He goes, I can guarantee it's over 350 as of this morning. So that's a writing center at LHS and it's, it's, it's off to a really good start.
Just want to note that, you know, the writing center, one of the things that is really neat for me is that it, it sort of promotes the idea that learning is a process. It promotes persistence, you know, where, where kids, you know, they're, they're never, there's not a finish line, that there's always a way to improve and enhance their writing and that the peer-to-peer connections. It's a really cool space they've carved out of the, the library and the string lights and cool seating and everything. So it's very welcoming for the students. They've, they've done a great job with that.
And the drop-in aspect of that expedited. We were going to think about doing the drop-in aspect of the student support center at mid-year and we, we said, why not now? It's working so well in, in the writing center.
Questions on any of the goals here before we move on to the next slide? Would concern me to come back?
Okay.
This next goal relates to our emphasis on embedding UDL principles, Universal Design for Learning. And you'll see as you review our plans that there's some consistent language frankly across all six schools. And so we thought we'd sort of take this one collectively and, and think about, you know, our, our approaches to embed UDL. One of the things that we've done is to make this part of the evaluation process. So our educators have goals that are tied to UDL. And so again, sort of going back to what we said earlier, that when you, when you put your goals down in writing, that it gets everybody to notice those goals and commit to those goals. And so this is a journey that we're on and we know we have a ways to go, but we think that this is a, this is a critical component really of, of MTSS. It's a critical way for us to ensure that students feel like they are represented in the learning process and that they have access to high-quality instruction. So our administrators are prepared to talk a little bit about each of the, the circles that are on the diagram here and what they look for as they, you know, wander through classrooms. And I can tell you that when I call their offices, none of them are ever at their desks. This, this is a mobile team of administrators who are out and about at all times. And I was always grateful for that. So anyone wants to kick us off in terms of talking about UDL and how it, what, what you look for as an administrator? Anyone?
Me? Oh, no.
So I guess when looking for engagement, you know, you're looking for options and choices and how the teacher sort of recruits student interest, right? So, you know, you're looking for engagement and how they get interested in the way that they're learning. So I think for students, like, you know, they're working, they could be groups, pairs, solo, like there's times when we're walking through a class and, and there is a comfort in some students who are choosing to work by themselves, some that want to work, work in pairs, some want to work in groups. So depending on what they're doing, having access to different readings, visuals, videos, podcasts, like just different stuff that gets the kids excited and engaged in the lesson. And you can tell when you walk in a room, you can kind of see in students whether they're engaged or not, you know? And then you have the teacher who's walking around who's focused on getting the students engaged, make sure they are. And, and so often, which is awesome, is that when you're in there kind of looking and the teacher can kind of sense that a student is not engaged, then they're, you know, they're getting, they're doing this with the kids and they're walking over and they're, and they're, they're moving a kid forward or getting them into, into the thing. So I think it's, you know, really important, especially then when, you know, the teachers are like, you know, the, developing the why of the lesson and making sure that kids can see how it connects to their personal life. Is there anything that gets excited? It kind of makes me think of the civic, civics action projects that the kids do, like they get to find a passion, something that they really want to do. They give out a survey, they get, they get data and they get really deep into doing something they want to do. And you see how excited they are because they have a passion for it. So if, you know, when we're in there and we're looking for something, that's sort of what you're looking for is the kids like kind of excited to do what they're doing and like really like buying into what they're learning in that moment. It's not just something that they have to learn, it's they're seeing the value in it, I think.
Just to add to Nicole, I think giving the kids, giving the students choice and opportunities for involvement in, in the lesson and the curriculum is a huge piece. And I think it really, you know, shown that students that are engaged in their learning are more apt to apply their knowledge and also have a desire to further their own learning. So at the elementary level, you know, we're looking for not all students doing the same thing. They're engaged in that curriculum in different ways, whether that's in group discussions or interactive activities, independent activities, also levels of choice, of challenge for them so they can pick and choose the, the challenge that they are, that they have in front of them. So, you know, we walk in the classroom and we see kids that are challenged, excited, and motivated to learn.
So we'll hit the representation circle next, I think, and thinking about how we present content and how we present information to students in different ways.
So students differ, or they differ in the way they perceive and comprehend information. So what we're looking for is that teachers are presenting that information in a lot of different ways. At the elementary level, I think it's rare now if you go in and just see a teacher standing there doing an auditory presentation, you see a lot of different choices in how students are listening to that information. I'm thinking of a kindergarten class or learning about what it means to observe. And the teachers aren't just talking about it, but they're adopting a tree. And they draw the tree and they follow that tree throughout all the seasons. And they're presenting that in the science lesson throughout the year. And kids can learn that way through art, through the visuals, through the actual watching and observing of the tree. And Bridges is a really good example of how information can be presented in a lot of different ways. Again, the teacher might do a mini lesson, but then it's reinforced through games, it's reinforced through partner work, individual work, lots of different presentation for the students. Yeah. Nicole?
So at the middle school level, and Donna, you're so good at that, she explains it beautifully. At the middle school level, it looks very similar to not just the teacher or the educator standing in front of the class, but knowing that the student's skill or standard by the end of class will be the same, but the way in which they learn how to get there might differ based on the diversity of our learners in front of us. And a great example I thought would, I would share is one I just saw last week. It was a math class and I walked into the room and students were learning how to move the numbers from one side of the equal sign to the other. And at first I couldn't tell what was going on because of the excitement in the class. And I was like, am I in the math class? And they were all interested. They had about three different options in the room. We had some students who physically had manipulatives on the table and they were standing up and they were physically moving colored objects from one side to the other to help show how some things can move and other things can't. There was one where the teacher was physically jumping with things in his hand from one side of the table to the other to show why he was doing it and they were talking it out. And then there was another student who had their work, like just, you know, worksheet, but also had all the steps written out because they wanted to essentially have that checklist of this is what I do first, this is what I do second. And they were all getting to the same result, but they were using their decision in how they learned and the best thing that worked for them. And one of the things that you notice when you see classes like that is the educator knows the students in front of them. And they really tailor the lesson. And the students had options. If they felt good enough, they can move on to another form of learning and show that they could do it. But it was definitely, you know, your auditory kids wanted to hear it and talk about it. Your tactile kids were moving stuff and it was just, it was really great to see. And it took about five minutes for anybody to even notice I was in the room because they were so engaged. So that was, that showed me that the class represented the learners in front of them.
The, the last circle relates to action and expression and the, the various ways that we allow students to express and demonstrate their learning. So anyone wants to kick us off?
I can start. So looking at the elementary level for students expressing their understanding, you know, if we took a, a subject like writing, you know, that could be, we might see some students writing, getting out their thoughts on paper with a pencil. Maybe some students are typing that out, maybe some students are using voice to text or speech to text. Maybe some students or younger age students are, are writing, are drawing pictures and labeling those, labeling those pictures with words. So there, the important thing is to be able to get out their thoughts and, and produce some language. However they do that, we, you know, we want to allow for options so they can be able to get out their thoughts. I think when you think about, you know, students being able to show their understanding about a certain concept, there are many ways to go about that. Whether students, you know, write that out or talk it out or act that out or, or create a presentation or make a video, there are many ways that we can do that. And that, I mean, some of that is just for our, our own creativity and what we, what we bring to that. But I think allowing, putting some options for students, you know, I think opens that up for students where maybe in a, previously they only had one route to express their understanding.
So I would add that I know Marty touched on the eval goal. It's so healthy to have every single teacher have this as part of their evaluation as one of their two goals because every single conversation before and after an evaluation observation has to, has to surround it. So what are, what are looked for is when I go into a classroom, we talk about what good teaching is, look for teachers guiding, appropriate goal-setting, students planning out their step, help, teachers helping them map those out. We look for evidence of teachers supporting work of students that they're engaged in, look for evidence of ongoing monitoring of student progress, breaking things down into smaller parts and assessing them on those smaller parts. Look for evidence of allowing multiple ways of communicating what they know, what they can do, what they've learned, projects, public presentations, multimedia options, options in different ways, dioramas. You said acting out, I saw an acting out option given to, in a rural language Spanish class, you know, about a week ago. Didn't have to do it, but they could do it. And it's, it's, it's interesting the kids who took a very traditional route versus that creation of models, use of things like that. Other look for is would be evidence of how, that making sure that teachers are basically allowing students to access multiple tools for constructing and composing, you know, prompts for writing, scaffolding, outlines available to them, rubrics for projects and challenges, access to appropriate technology for, for that assignment. As everybody else has said, options in different, various ways to prove what you've learned, what you can know, what you know and what you can do. That's what we're, those are what the dialogues about evaluation and observation are all about and the, and the fact that they're, it's part of the evaluation ties it together.
I think hopefully what you're hearing is sort of the attempts to sort of bake this into the, into the system, right? That, that it's hopefully informing many of the conversations that we're having with educators. And one of the things that Beth, as our curriculum director and I have talked about is sort of how this can even inform the curriculum revision, review and mapping process that she's leading us through. So if you're able to comment on some of those.
So I think it's just important that we, you know, we spent so much time in the past 10, 15 years talking about UBD when we talk about curriculum mapping and curriculum review. And we haven't as a district really thought about putting the UDL, informing our decisions with UDL in the curriculum mapping, the curriculum review, the curriculum revisiting, revising. So I think that moving forward, putting some of these protocols into place so that as a district we're aligned in what we do and when we're revising, reviewing and mapping out curriculum to make sure that it's informed with the UDL ends.
Hopefully the, you know, we're in the middle of a literacy review as the committee knows and sort of the, even the, the outcome of that, we hope that that, you know, puts us in a position that it puts tools that it puts tools in teachers' hands where they can implement these UDL principles. So really trying to really, you know, bake these principles into the, into the operations of the district, top to bottom. Questions on this slide before we move on? We certainly can come back. All right. The last district goal relates to our interest in developing a broader renewed and widely shared vision of student success. And so some exciting things happening in this area. You'll see that there's a diagram in the bottom right that, that I've often trotted up in the spirit of Thanksgiving. Some folks call this my turkey diagram. Looks like some turkey feathers. But it seems to me there's many sort of factors pointing us towards this broader renewed vision of student success. One that promotes high levels of engagement, one where students feel that their learning is relevant, learning where that is self-directed and, and problem-oriented for the students. And so I think you'll see in our school improvement plans, some of our attempts to make this part of the student experience. So I'll start with our elementary team. One of the, one of the highlights of their plan is the, the beginning to explore student-led conferences. So talk to us a little bit about that.
For our elementary students, we're always encouraging, encouraging student voice and encouraging students to own their own learning. So, you know, we, as we explore this, you know, we are thinking about, this is also a way that they, we, they can showcase their work, not only what is occurring in the classroom, but is what also is going on in specials. I think this may be also a way to engage families in, in new and exciting ways. And also for us to align more, have this experience align more with the vision of the graduate.
At the middle, anything else at the elementary level? That's a good, great explanation. And at the, at the middle level, we've, we have some experience with student-led conferences. But to send us off in a slightly different direction, a project that is exciting and cutting across both middle schools is something called the Witness Stones Project. Can't recall if this is a familiar phrase to the committee, but it is, it's an exciting opportunity for this whole community. So I think Nicole's going to speak to that.
So I have two very excited teachers that are bringing the Witness Stones Project to Long Meadow. It really practices, especially in our seventh grade, social studies and history classes, they're going to be looking a lot at research. And it's particularly with individuals who were enslaved in Long Meadow that had a real impact on our community. And the nice thing is it's about 12 to 14 individuals that the students will get to research. And the project will actually do about two students, two individuals a year. So for the next six or seven years, the incoming seventh grades will get to experience this project. We don't want to give too much away because in April, we have our students coming to actually present when they're in the middle of the project. So we want them to be able to speak to that. But the nice part is, especially with the vision of a graduate and our students becoming more involved with their community and actually making an impact with real world applications. Now our seventh graders are going to actually work with our historical society and get to practice making an impact that way. And then it'll move on to eighth grade when they have their civics project. This won't, it won't be the first time now. So they'll get to experience this kind of work in seventh and eighth grade. And we're really excited because they get to literally place a stone, like the witness stone. They'll learn about the people to know where to place them. They're really excited, like very excited.
Yeah, they're really excited about it. All right. So I guess I'll talk about standards-based science, just as exciting. So at Glenbrook, we are piloting a standards-based approach and grading system. So instead of the traditional grades, students are being assessed emerging, developing, demonstrating and mastering. And this is being reported on the Mastery Transcript Consortium, I always have trouble with that word, but website. So behaviors and work habits are included, that's separate. The instruction of the standards will be differentiated. So Pam's doing a really great job with this and she seems to like it. They have multiple opportunities to demonstrate their learning. And so she's also gone to a few of the professional developments to learn more about it. And the symposium, I think, is what she went to back in October to just learn more about how we're doing this. I think the hardest part right now for this is just because it's an eighth grade and what does this look like going to high school? So I think a lot of parents had a lot of questions about it and Pam is really trying her best to try to figure out as she goes because this is obviously new to her as well. But the symposium she did go to did share a little bit about how there was admissions counselors, NCAA officials, financial representatives from schools that are talking about how they are starting to accept students from these different types of, especially the competency-based transcripts like this one that she is working through. As we approach the end of the trimester, the, the website right now isn't accessible to about two-thirds of the, of the parents for some reason, but a third of them actually can get in there. But when you're in there, it shows you everything about the kid. So like she just feels like it's so, it's really valuable to not get just the letter grade. It's really cool to see. You know, it's like, oh, you got a B minus in this chemistry standard on this, right? It's like, well, it's pretty cool for her now to like watch where they're at and how it lines up. So she is using Power School to sort of, in the background of Power School and how she's doing it. She's a very techie person too, but she's going to be able to show the parents how their kids are progressing and, and the, I know it's chemistry that she's doing now, the eight different standards. But she did say that this should be up and running shortly where in the second trimester that parents will be able to see all of that data on their, on their child. So that's what we're doing in science. And then on another note, in STEAM, they have the digital portfolios that they're doing in both schools. So both John McCarthy at Williams and Amory Salvon at Glenbrook, they require students to create a reflection in their digital website portfolio. So if you go into each one of the kids, it has their name, tell me about yourself. It's like their own webpage. Has all this really cool, and they have the engineer design process, rubrics, pictures of what they're doing, videos. And, you know, they get graded on, at the end of each task or project within this portfolio. So it's pretty cool that kids can like, you know, all about me, they have like pictures and tell you a little bit about themselves. So that's also pretty cool that they're doing something like that too, to show their learning.
Sort of both those, both those opportunities at middle school and even what we talked about, the student-led conferences at the elementary level, sort of putting kids in charge of their own learning and, and helping them sort of develop, giving them opportunities to reflect on their learning over time through the, through the development of this mastery transcript, this sort of different type of transcript that, that the science teacher's using, but also through the creation of, of digital portfolio in their STEAM classes. So I think when kids have those opportunities to create those, those portfolio, that track record, that record of their learning, I think it's really powerful for a kid to see that over 180 days, wow, this is, this is what I did. I think that's really neat for kids. So I appreciate the teachers who are willing to sort of help us learn as a, as an organization, help us learn how this can work for students, how this, how we can assess students differently against either a set of standards or the vision of the graduate. So it's great stuff. And then similarly at the high school, a capstone course that is under development. So Tom?
Yeah, so the, I'll bring it back to what started the vision of the graduate, why we, why we all started, you know, talking about that and focusing on that. That was that self-study of four-year self-study of NIESC. And we got the report last December and it gave us a lot of accolades, but it also, you know, shined a light on some things that we can do. Senior year, that graduate is supposed to be, it's supposed to be a culminating year, it's supposed to be a deeper dive. You can take some really interesting, more in-depth electives. You've gone beyond the, the core curriculum and you can get into the, into the, the, you know, the deeper versions of that. And that's awesome and that's great. We work hard on having high, high interest, high engagement, personalized electives. But as you know, we started, we identified a need for kind of like living the vision of the graduate and looking at those six competencies. So we are now in our third year of internships. It's a great program. It's an awesome program. It has gone beyond, when you hear from students, what they've learned, the successes and the failures, but the real-life experiential opportunities that they've had, it makes you want to do more of that. So while we were complimented on the, the burgeoning internship program, we were also challenged and we self-identified. I mean, a lot of that study was self-identification. We self-identified and it was reiterated by the, the two visiting teams, you can do more with seniors. What can you do with seniors to kind of have them get that experiential culminating personalized learning? So while we love the internships, we don't want that to be the only choice. We don't want the only, only option in town. So we have kicked around a lot of ideas. There are, there are several things going on. Quite frankly, I think the writing center that we touched on is an awesome example of experiential learning and helping and showing independence and accountability. But we're excited about starting a capstone opportunity. Don't know if it's going to be for seniors or juniors and seniors. We're having that dialogue right now. But I will be bringing to you in January, an outline for a course. It's probably going to be a semester-based course, but it's, it's all about the things we're talking about. It will involve integration and extension of prior knowledge, authentic experience for students. It will require students to perform and use the skills and competencies. Student independence and inquiry with a big emphasis on research. It's interesting, we just got back our first, one of the goals of NIESC self-identified was that we should, we should poll our, our graduates. So we're polling the class of 2022. And we're continuing to do that, but the, we, we got some really good feedback. But one area, while we got complimented on the research that we have students engage in in English classes, we also said, students also identified that they would have been, they would have benefited by even more research. So a class like this will, will teach you how to do formal research. And critical thinking and creativity is involved, public display, public presentation. So we're excited about it. We hope to have at least two sections so students don't have to make a tough choice because when you build a schedule. But we have about a half a dozen teachers. This would be interdisciplinary. This would not have to be in any particular department. Anyone should be able to teach it. I think the humanities kind of lends itself towards the research part of it, but it can be about any subject. And it's going to be a launch for September of, of, of next year. And it's another opportunity for students to do the deeper dive, the personalization and get that experience that we're trying, we're trying to capture.
With a, with a culminating presentation, public presentation to a panel of community members perhaps, or staff members or administrators, that kind of thing, right?
Yep. And Erin Corbett, who runs our internship program, will play that role in terms of helping form those, form those committees and form those groups. And it's great to speak publicly. It's nerve-wracking. It makes, it makes students grow. It makes them stronger before they graduate because they're going to be doing a lot of that in life. So we're excited about it and we're going to make a run at it for fall of '24.
There you go. All right.
Can I just expand on that a little bit?
Yeah.
So I'm the student rep for the class of 2025 to the school council and we talked about this a lot. And on a personal note, my brother Nick Madir, he was a 2022 graduate and he was in the internship program and he went on to get a job with, with plant construction we had his internship with. And he's still working. That's a big, that's a career path for him. So we've seen the successes of the internship program. I think that this is a great sort of add-on in addition to those successes that we've seen with the capstone. This is a great opportunity to let students sort of learn more about what they're interested in. And something that I've tried to bring up is if we have a student sort of do this research project or an internship and we, and they, and they think that they're really passionate about this subject and they may realize that they don't, maybe they're not as passionate as they thought. High school in this time is a really great opportunity to let kids realize what they like and what they don't like before they either go on to do a career right out of high school or go into study that in college. This is a great opportunity to let students realize if they truly like that subject that they want to go into or not. I think this is, this is really important and would be a great addition.
Well, well said. Yeah, well said. Thank you, Andrew. All right. From the committee, questions, comments, feedback at all?
All right. Marty, I'm wondering, have we collected any feedback about student-led conferences from parents?
I'd say it has been largely positive, but there's been some parents who have felt that they, they prefer the traditional model. And I think it's something that Nicole and Nicole, lots of Nikols in this room, I think there's five Nikols. But our two middle school principals have talked about that, about, you know, how do you, to, you know, take that feedback, that initial feedback that we've received from parents to refine and improve it. And so, and Nicole, I don't want to put her on the spot, probably would be better for a future meeting, but Nicole has shared with me some ideas that she has around how to, how to refine it based on the feedback that we've gotten. I know she's talked to quite a few Williams Middle School parents about it. So I think we do have to maybe more formally collect some feedback to make sure that parents are getting the information that they need. I think one of the, my thoughts is that sort of that, that conference, the conference model should evolve and grow with the communication tools that are at our fingertips, you know? I mean, so there, there's so much access to student performance via the parent Power School portal or just simply emails back and forth from staff. And so if we can make sure that parents are getting the information they need, but also create an opportunity for students to be part of that conversation. I mean, as an educator, I always thought it was awkward for me just to talk to, and I've taught high school students and maybe it's different, but to talk to just a child's parents or caregivers. And I always felt like the most important person had to be in the room, the child, you know? And so I think the more that we can create that, I think it builds community, it builds partnership and it puts kids in charge of their learning. So we have some, we got some work to do for sure and maybe some more formal feedback gathering to your point and, and, you know, sort of refine and grow the practice. But that's some exciting opportunities for us, I think.
Other questions, feedback? Jamie?
Yeah, just feedback. Thank you everyone, obviously, for taking the time tonight. I think it was fabulous. I just have a couple of quick things. The exploration of student-led conferences, can you expand on that? Like what, what do you mean exploration? Are we picking a grade? You know, what are you thinking in that regard? That being said, I'll give my, I'm, I'm not a big fan of it. If it isn't done the, the right way, that grade level kind of makes me hesitate. The one person that I personally think you should be getting feedback from is Mrs. Bridges. She did this in kindergarten as a student-led, but it wasn't fully student-led. She really integrated it with what the parents were looking for. Because my job as a parent and you're, you same thing, everyone out over there is a parent, is to reinforce what you're saying and kind of be at least somewhat aligned. You're never going to fully agree. But she did an amazing job in kindergarten, student-led. But we didn't do it after kindergarten because obviously it's different. But the way she led those conferences, I would pick her brain on how to do this and how to do it well because honestly, I think she's done it better than everybody else in this district, not to be all on Mrs. Bridges. But she, she made it a student-led, but it was kind of a combo event. She was really, really good at it. I would just be very hesitant to leave it all on the student because I don't think at those, maybe at the high school level it's appropriate. These younger ages, I don't think I personally get enough out of it to re, re, you know, enforce everything that my child needs to, you know, help them through whatever they're working on or whatever they need help with. So just that, that's just my opinion. You don't have to answer anything. And the other thing, just being a business person, I look at everything from the business lens. And since we're in the business of educating the Long Meadow students, the only thing I didn't like and it's really, it's not nitpicky, but it's kind of the vision, every one of these has a different vision on it. I don't, I don't disagree with any of the visions, but whenever I look at them, I go, you know, if we were a business, I would call everybody in and go, what are we doing here? Like and kind of make sure whatever we're communicating. And we might be the only one reading these, I get it. But every time you put it on a piece of paper, we should all be similar. It's all very different in that regard. So I liked all the visions, but I would pick one and go with it.
I think we're right. I think the, the unifying principles is the, the district improvement plan and then the, the components within it. But fair point.
I liked what the high, the high school one, not the, you know, the high school one I liked because it came back to the vision of the graduate. But we spent, we spent tons of time on it, you know? But is, you know, does that make sense? I'd like it all to be similar. My, my preference of it just is looking at more of a business perspective because it is a business. We want to be similar, our voice out to the community should all be the same, whether my student, I have a student in all three of these schools. So the, the, it's a, everything that the vision of the graduate says is, it's what all, I want all my kids to learn, whether in elementary school, middle school or high school, it's the same thing.
Could be, could be.
Could be, could be. I'd say the individual school mission statements probably haven't been looked at in some time. I hope that's a fair assessment. Maybe in light of the adoption of the vision of the graduate.
There we go.
It might be time to do that.
Yeah. And it's not like, but honestly, I appreciate all the time. And I think it was fabulous. The only one that just jumped out at me was the one at the elementary is how you do that. You got to do that right to make sure you give me the right information to help my elementary students.
Would you care to respond? Is there anything that?
Yeah. I mean, to your point about Mrs. Bridges, I've already talked to her about that. And when we're talking about exploring, it's talking to teachers who have done it. And we know they've done it well. And also balancing what we feel at the elementary level, maybe at all levels, parents do still want to hear from the teacher. You know, they want some information from the teacher. And yet we do want to give, empower the students as well. Mrs. Bridges spent lots of time modeling with the students. She had mock conferences with the little kindergarteners to get them ready for the conference. And then she made sure that she had time for the families. And she made sure that they, you know, she talked to the kids about making sure their goals, she shared their goals because, you know, they're five and six-year-olds. And sometimes it was a little bit different. So she did a lot of really hard work. And I think that front-loading has to go into that at the elementary level. So when we say explore, it's like looking at what can that look like? And talking to the teachers that have done it and have done it well.
And if I, and yeah, just if that's, I got it now, what we're doing. Obviously utilizing Mrs. Bridges, I think it's probably one of the best resources out there. If that's the framework, I think that'll be fabulous for our schools. But making sure everybody knows it's going to take a lot of effort.
It takes a lot of modeling.
Giving them enough time, you know? It's like, anyway, and you prepare, you prepare, you prepare, you know? You're going to probably do a better job. But if we don't give enough time to prepare, it's going to be completely, it's going to get frustrating to parents. So that's the other side of it. But she did, she was amazing.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I knew it took a lot of effort to get a child to participate in a meeting like that with both of their parents, usually both parents are there at that grade, you know? And she was amazing. So, you know?
Can I say something about the vision statement too? That was always a charge at each school to come up with your vision statement that aligned with the culture of your school, the unique culture of your school. So, you know, maybe it is something to revisit. So we would all, Tom, did you do? I don't know. Are you the?
We used to have one and the vision of the graduate replaced it. I just include our core values and beliefs because it's other, it's a little bit more body to what we're trying to do.
But that was always a charge at each school to write that statement. And you did it with your school council and teachers gave.
They're all fabulously.
Yeah, they are.
I don't have any issue with any of them.
I kind of like the idea of there being sort of the district.
The district.
Statement. And then each school kind of building their own, knowing that that's sort of the district overview for all of our students, but giving each school that voice of their own, that opportunity to craft something that reflects their own space, I think, brings a little bit of ownership also.
Other thoughts, feedback?
Just two.
Go for it.
Questions. Tom, how are the, how's the Writing Center staffed? Is it staffed with?
Just students or is there?
So Jonathan Wild, English teacher, ELA teacher. It's part of his, it's about forty percent of what he does on a daily basis. He's there. We've also gotten creative and we have duties that we put teachers on. So we've, we've scheduled Jonathan in there as his duty. So he's kind of an omnipresent person there. Carrie Kennedy, our librarian, our media center specialist, has been a great partner. And then we trained sixty students. So I want to give credit. I mean, they are doing a lot of heavy lifting. And with any group of students, I mean, all of them are doing a great job. Some of them have, there's probably going to be a formalization for the second semester of kind of like executive board and leadership roles within that. It's kind of evolving. But there are, Jonathan Wild is in there a lot. He ran the formal training of how to, how you meet a client, how you go through the process that it follows. But while he's in there a lot of the time, it's now, it's now moving and has its own life. So when he's not there, it's humming along. But we have an army. We have an army of sixty students and one really, really skilled and motivated teacher.
And do we, we still have two teachers staffing the Student Support Center?
We have one point eight.
One point eight?
Yep, one point eight. And both of, so they're both certified in special education. One is double certified in special education and math. And one is certified in special education and reading.
I agree. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one final thing.
Yeah, go for it.
Actually, for Nicole, this one? Yeah.
Okay.
All right. So will kids get a Power School letter grade in science? And, or you don't know yet, you're still working on details.
So I talked to Pam today about it and she's not, she could say to a parent, like, I think she has, she feels comfortable enough being like, well, if I had to do this, this is what the grade would be. But the whole point of this is to, is to go, is to not have it be that. But I think that's the struggle she has right now is because Williams is not doing it, right? So it's just tough because she feels like, ah, like I'm, like I'm, she might be the perfect person that was chosen to do this. She's doing a great job, but she's really trying to. What she's hoping to do is that, like, the stuff that's in this, on this website, this MTC website is, we talked about it today, like, even if the parents who can't see it, even if we have to go through and literally print out each one of the kids so we can give it and give that to a parent, then we'll do that. We'll figure that piece out. We're going to print a lot of stuff. But I think it is, it is tough. I think some parents are looking for, and some kids are looking for, that letter grade. So that's what's very different for us is that we're not used to that. So we're learning as we go.
I mean, I love the idea of standards-based grading because it also puts the emphasis on standards-based teaching because you really have to look at what you're doing, whether you're assessing what the standards are asking you to teach, you know? For ninth grade, is there an honors option? Like, I'm just wondering how will recommendations go and what?
So coincidentally, we'll be meeting tomorrow to talk about the recommendation process. And we can fold that into our conversation about, you know, how students coming out of the Glenbrook Science Experience, how they could be recommended for the appropriate high school course. I think that they'll, you know, knowing what I know about the, what information Pam is gathering on student performance, I think there'll be plenty of information to help teacher, parent, student make an informed decision about what class they take at the high school.
Potentially more information than others have.
Probably, I'd say, I'd say more frankly, yeah. Well said.
Thanks. Can I ask, which grade are you doing this in?
Eighth grade.
It's eighth grade, okay.
Which is probably why we have so many questions, because they're going to the high school. So I think that's, you know?
I was just wondering because if they're, when you're doing it with kids who are coming from a standards-based system, you get less of that. Like, if you were doing it in sixth grade, they were in a standards-based system and they're going into it, but they're going to letter grade, letter grade, and then standard-based. So I guess that helps. But I think my real question was, how are we going to, how are you going to decide whether to do it at Williams like next year? And then whether to adopt it in other subjects?
I think we'll have to gather feedback from kids and from parents about their experience. And, you know, it's a, it's a learning opportunity for us for sure. And so I'd say that, you know, probably come springtime, we'll be in a better position to understand if it's something that we can build out or if it's, you know, something that we have to go back to the drawing board on.
And when we have access, I think, to seeing what it looks like, if there's a way for all of us to kind of look at that too. Because I'm just as curious. She showed me some pieces of it. But I think when they show the breakdown in this for each kid, it seems like it's pretty cool to like learn where they're at and how they, how they did. But it is new to us, so it is.
I think when you see that digital record of a student's progress towards mastery, I think it's impressive. So it's some technical kinks to work out.
Yeah.
There's a, there's a high ceiling for this, I think.
I think it's a stretch too. It's out of the comfort zone. So I forget the name of the teacher you said.
Pam Novak.
Novak. So thank you to her for taking that on because it's, A, a lot of work to try something new like that. But B, also really does kind of, you know, push some of the boundaries of what we're used to and what we're comfortable with.
Right.
And that's meaningful and good work.
Mm-hmm. Thanks.
All right. I had one follow-up question for Mr. and Mrs. The capstone course that's currently in development, I forget. Does the high school do the AP capstone diploma? Do not currently?
We do not have that AP.
Okay. I was just curious if there was any sort of tie-in or using any of the frameworks that are part of that or if it was something that we've had any experience with over the years. I know it's longer, that's like a two-year.
It's like a two-year.
Yeah.
We're looking to steal the best ideas from existing plans. So that's one of the ones we've looked at, what we've looked at. I'll be honest with you, we didn't want to make it seem like elitist and not accessible to everybody. That's the reason. I mean, it's kind of like our approach to the internship. We're trying to take, AP is great, College Board plays a role. But for the last couple of years, we've, I don't know if you, a couple of years ago, I made a promise, I will not bring you a recommendation for a new AP course without taking one off the plate. And I have not done that. So if that came, something had to come off the plate. And, but the thought, the discussion that's ongoing is more like, it's also thinking outside the box. It's a little bit of a risk. And so the people that are willing to do it, and there's about a half a dozen who are interested and, you know, are kind of vying for it. And I think it's a work in progress. I don't think this, you know, will run it next year. And it doesn't mean that even the second semester will look exactly the same. But we've looked at the AP course. It's awesome. It's in-depth. I mean, almost the first entire year of that is a research.
The research.
The research part. And then the culmination is a full year. We're going to start with a semester.
Yeah.
And learn and go. And I think it's going to be awesome. And we'll make it better as we go.
And I love the idea of having multiple sections for that because I know that's particularly a challenge often with seniors finding things that those single classes can sometimes make access really tricky.
Yeah. Trying to take away hard choices.
Yes.
Trying to make it easier.
Last thoughts or feedback from anyone else? All right. I just wanted to say, I loved a lot of this. I feel like whenever you guys come in and whenever teachers come in and students come in, I always go away, both as a parent and an educator, very impressed with all of the fantastic work that's going on. But one of the things that really stood out to me tonight was how much all of this is so student-centered and active learning. And I just really love that from every level. The work that you're doing with the elementary students and that idea of student-led conferences and the idea of active choice with the learning that they're doing in the math program and I'm sure to come in the literacy program, the student support centers that are happening, the work in SEL, the Writing Center, the student support centers there, the curriculum and the idea of using UDL as that lens to developing new curriculum. There's just every, every aspect of this had student engagement and access built into it in ways that really just reflected the vision of the graduate. So we just really appreciate that as a, as a parent and as an educator. I like hearing a lot of this work. It's very, very exciting. So thank you very much for coming out tonight and sharing all this with us. Appreciate you. There is. If anybody would like to make a recommended motion, we are able to do that. Yeah. Correct. Yes.
I move on the recommendation of the individual school councils and the superintendent that the school committee approved the two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five school improvement plans for Blueberry Hill School, Center School, Wolf Swamp Road School, Glenbrook Middle School, Williams Middle School, and Long Meadow High School as presented.
Thank you.
Could I, my apologies, it should say twenty-three to twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
I was going to say, I thought they were annually.
That's so true. I must have misread something. All right. We have a motion slash slightly revised. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, we've got a bunch of seconds. Love that. All right. Any further discussion? Seeing that, all want to vote. Zach?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Here.
And yes for me as well. All right. Thank you very much.
Before we go, just, I'm incredibly proud of this group, the way they work together, the way they work individually with them. I'm incredibly proud of the work that the educators do to drive these plans. So there's a lot of great thinking, a lot of great innovation, a lot of great work going on. So thank you all for coming out tonight after a long day.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs.
Thank you to all of your staff and all the things that are going on. All right. We are moving on to administrative reports. School committee chair port, I don't really have much other than that I wanted to give a shout-out to Mr. Williams at the high school for. And I'm not sure what the final total tally was, but over six thousand pounds of food collected with the help of students and families around the district and delivered to local food pantries. So thank you for, again, hosting that. That's an amazing, amazing resource for our local families. And that's all I've got tonight. So we're back to you.
A couple items. Middle school project, I'll just hit this now. I know there's a bullet in your, lower part of your agenda. But the process to select a design firm to help lead the middle school project is underway. We've had an incredibly strong response from firms that wanted to be registered as potential bidders. Tomorrow, we have, we're hosting a briefing session for designers, for potential designers. And we expect that the RFS, the Request for Service Applications, will come back to us by December twelfth. And that we'll be in a position to award a design contract in early February. So that's, that's really exciting. And the next meeting of the Building Committee is December twelfth. So great stuff there.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth, sorry. Thank you. SEL implementation, Nilda may have mentioned this. We have a team of educators scheduled to attend the training in December, on December fourth and fifth down in New Haven. And that's, those are, will be leading our school-based SEL implementation teams. Our literacy program review, Beth is kicking off a meeting with the Review and Pilot Committee. I think there's close to twenty educators and administrators on that team. And you guys are meeting on Friday. Beth kind of hung out and stayed just a little bit longer in case you had any questions about where we are with the literacy program review. So I just wanted to pause there to see if there's anything that you're wondering about, the pilot and review that is in front of us.
So you have twenty educators who are going to?
Twenty people on the Review and Pilot Committee. We will be at the committee meeting on Friday identifying teachers to pilot. We had over thirty-two teachers who are interested in piloting the curriculum this spring.
Wow, that's awesome.
So it's, you know, now it's, that, there's representation from every school, every grade level. Does it make sense to have an entire first-grade team at this school pilot together so that they're collaborating the entire time? Or does it make sense to have a K to five teacher from across the district? You know, so we're, those are some of the questions that we're grappling with. And I want to make sure that the committee feels comfortable making those decisions with us. But really great interest, great response. I think certainly, as we talked about at curriculum subcommittee, there's a sense of urgency here, but we want to be strategic and thoughtful in how we roll this out. urgency here, but we wanna be strategic and thoughtful in how we roll this out, so I recognize that starting a huge initiative like this in January and trying to make a decision, I'm thinking by the May twenty-eighth school committee meeting, is aggressive, but I think that we have enough information and data that told us that a large number of our educators have lost trust and confidence in the, the curriculum that we're using, and there's an urgent sense to, to shift. Our November PDEs with our elementary colleagues has been really rich in trying to remove some of the barriers and the misconceptions about what's out there with literature right now, and I think our literacy coaches did a brilliant job of bringing, like, common ground and consensus to, it's, we're not doing science of reading, researchers are doing science of reading, scientists are doing science of reading, we're teachers, we're using that research and that science to inform our decisions. We're going to take the great parts about balanced literacy, which is that it can be teacher-led, gradual release, small group instruction, whole group instruction, so we wanna balance in our instruction, like we do in every single subject, but we need structure with explicit and systematic instruction. So we have narrowed it down to four programs that we've looked at as a district over the past month. We hope to narrow it to two on Friday. I have had more meetings and Zooms with reps from different companies over the past month with our literacy coaches. Great information, hard to choose when everybody is giving you the best pitch, but I think we have some great choices, and we have some exciting adventures ahead of us, and exciting work ahead of us, so. Any other questions about that, though?
That's great, thirty-two people. That's fantastic.
Yes, when, there's already, you know, they're in a second era of a math program, so there's a lot on their plate, and they're excited to take on this work, so I'm really, I'm excited and grateful and appreciative of their efforts.
Thanks for hanging out for that, appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
With, with Mr. Mazza, we have begun to hold preliminary budget discussions with individual central office administrators and building-based teams, and so we're starting to scaffold up towards the development of the FY twenty-five budget, and as a reminder to the community and to the committee, we have a joint meeting scheduled on next Monday with the Select Board and Town Finance Committee, so I think that's at seven o'clock, if I'm not mistaken. And then Thursday, I have an opportunity to continue the professional development series that I've been involved with, with Nilda Irizari as our, as our co-lead in our DEI work, and that is work, it's a PD series that's sponsored by the Mass Association of School Superintendents, and a couple of great facilitators who are really helping us build our capacity to co-lead our work in this important area, so I'm, I'm excited. One of the facilitators is Dr. Darnisa Amanti Jackson, who Nicole had an opportunity to see here at the Mass Association of School Committees Conference recently, and she's just an amazing, inspiring trainer, so, you know, so we have an opportunity to work with her in a, in really small teams, so it's, it's really, really powerful stuff, so that's Thursday for me, so that's it.
All right, other administrative reports?
Nothing tonight.
Good? Okay. Student representative report.
All right. So just to expand on a little bit, from what I talked about with Lily May at Cool, so winter sports has begun at the high school, tryouts and practices are now being held, just a good luck, good luck to all of our athletes on their upcoming seasons. And then, and this wasn't an official LHS event, but I thought I should touch on it. We recently had the Run Like Cat event, which many LHS students participated in, which was on this past Friday, November twenty-fourth, took place in the LHS park, not that's where the start and finish line was, there was a one-mile walk and five-k run. Will Calley, a former LHS student, he was the winner of the event, it was great, and all the proceeds went to the Katarina Boskovik Memorial Fund, which goes on to fund a scholarship in honor of Katarina Boskovik, as well as other, they donate to other charities throughout Western Mass in honor of her. Something else that I wanted to say, just pertaining to the event, is they had seven-hundred-and-fifty participants who took on the course, which I thought was really awesome, that's even more than last year, so they raised a lot of money for the charity, and I think it's just a really great event to see the community come out in support of this cause, so that's all I have.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other reports? LPVAC?
I do have a report. So we met on November fifteenth for our FY twenty-three audit presentation, so a firm comes and does an audit, which is important, because we share finances with all of the sending districts, and again, received commendations for financial reporting. It's a very detailed report that comes in a binder, I have one in my car if anyone's interested, and they walk us through everything, and, you know, I think I've mentioned this, but we've started meeting in person again, and so it's, there is something different when you have all of the people together in the same space and talking about, you know, some really specific questions about budget, it was a, a good meeting. Also, my monthly bus update, we are working on the infrastructure, finalizing the chargers, and expect twenty-five electric buses to be delivered in the spring, which I find unbelievable, because I felt like, was this really gonna happen? But it's happening.
Yeah, exciting.
Also, Transversa, which is a program where the bus drivers will have a turn-by-turn computer system on the bus that will provide them directions, and parents will be able to access through an app to track where the buses are. I'm not sure if it will help with the late buses from LPVAC, but at least we will have an idea of the timing on pickup, and that is going to come to Long Meadow first, and I think we've been quite vocal about, you know, our dissatisfaction with the late buses, and so that's up and rolling, and that is expected to begin after the winter holiday. The last thing, I think this is kind of interesting, they are launching this December the Yonder Y-O-N-D-R cellphone pouches at LPVAC, so students will have to bring their cellphone to school and put it into a pouch that's magneted shut, and then when they leave the school, they un-magnet and they can take their, there's, there's a lot of things that need to be worked out with that, but Alvin Morton, the new executive director, was one of the people who had a lot to do with this program when it was implemented in his previous district, so he had a lot of practical sort of experience with the problems that they might face, and the communication that needs to go out to families, and sort of anticipates a smooth transition, so it was kind of interesting. I, I, you know, I know we've never mentioned it with any sort of, you know, where we're actually taking steps towards something like that, but one of our, you know, collaborating districts is going to be, I guess not district, but is gonna be putting that into place, so I thought it was interesting. So it was a good meeting. Thank you. Questions?
Can I add that our, our, I'm sorry.
I have a question, but you can go first. It's a dumb question.
Yeah.
I just know, are all the buses gonna be delivered together, and are you gonna go?
Oh.
I mean, I kind of feel like I should, like, if they have, like, a ribbon cutting, or something like that. I think, are, is Easton Meadow getting five?
I know every district is gonna benefit with at least one box.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know.
Maybe not five.
Distribution amongst the member districts, yeah, though.
So, but yeah, I mean, I'm just interested. And then I think I told you, are they Blue Bell? Is that the brand? And it has like a green, anyways, there's one very subtle thing that you will be able to see, there's like a blue bird, but the ones that are electric have green birds on them, or something like that, I can't even remember if it's a bird, but it's something on the side of the bus, so anyways, I think they should look totally different, like spaceships, but they don't, I guess, they look just like regular school buses.
They should let you drive them.
I know, you might be their most.
Our.
Oh, yeah, blue bird, I was, all right, it is a blue bird.
There you go.
Yes.
Our eighth graders from Williams, I think, are visiting Career Tech tomorrow, I mean, the whole, so good opportunity to, for kids to see what the offerings are over at Career Tech.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm excited about that. It was something that we had discontinued that practice for a little while, and, but I think it's great for kids to see, it opens their eyes to some of the shops that are over there, that they wouldn't have thought about otherwise, so, yeah.
Yeah, my daughter will be going, so I said, you know how I have that meeting? That is where you're going for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, energy and sustainability, Adam?
We just changed our December meeting from the fourteenth to nineteenth, otherwise we're deliberating how best to sustain and provide energy to the community.
All right. SEAL, I know that Michaela was not able to make it tonight, so she'll be able to update us next time, and then we've already heard our middle school building update. We have no subcommittee reports, nor do we have any ongoing business or new business, and so we are headed directly towards an executive session, and we have a possible motion, note the small change.
Okay.
That's general law.
C is?
Chapter.
Chapter. A is?
Just part of it.
And section, right?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, I move that the school committee meet an executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A, Purpose Two, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with Unit A, and Purpose Seven, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote. Zach?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Adam?
Yes.
And yes for me as well.
Have a good night.
Good night. We are headed into executive session, and so the open session of the meeting is adjourned. Have a lovely evening, and we will see everyone on December nineteenth for our next meeting. All right.